Buenas tardes a todos. Hoy es el 2 de julio de 2019 y la reunión especial del Comité de Salud, Salud, Energía y Derechos de los Trabajadores se dará a cabo. Son las 5:03. Soy Teresa Mosqueta, la presidenta del comité. Y estoy acompañada de la alcaldesa Bagshaw, la alcaldesa Pacheco y la alcaldesa González. Gracias a todos por estar aquí. Sé que más gente probablemente está en camino. Quiero agradecer a la audiencia increíblemente completa, que tenemos en los pisos y en los pisos de capacidad, y gracias a todos por estar aquí durante la noche. Nos han informado de que hay gente en el salón de overflow también. Así que como gente, filtramos, vamos a entrar más gente. Si has hecho tu testimonio público y necesitas despedirse o puedes ver el resto desde los pisos, nos encargaremos de cambiar de lugar mientras intentamos que venga más gente al salón. Quiero decir una enorme apreciación a todos los que se unen. Sabemos que la gente tiene trabajos de tiempo completo además de más. Mucha gente trabaja día y noche en esta industria, así que sabemos que no hay un momento óptimo para tener una conversación. Pero gracias por hacer el intento de estar aquí esta noche y compartir tu tiempo con nosotros. La alcaldesa González y yo somos co-sponsors de esta legislación y realmente apreciamos el feedback que hemos recibido hasta ahora. Y todo el consejo durante los últimos años ha estado involucrado en este asunto. Gracias, alcaldesa Sawant, por unirnos también. Feliz de tenerte aquí. También quiero dejar a la gente saber que hay interpretación en español. Si alguien necesita información en español, tenemos interpretación. Así que solo告诉我们 si necesitas una interpretación en español. Y estoy segura de que hay gente en los pisos a quien esto se está transmitiendo también. Si alguien en los pisos necesita interpretación, por favor告诉我们. Si alguien necesita asistencia auditiva, también tenemos los monitores aquí. Aaron House, nuestro abogado, puede ayudarte con eso. Y para cualquiera que necesite asistencia de parking, tenemos un porcentaje descuento ya que es en la noche, reconociendo que a veces todo el mundo tiene necesidades de movilidad diferentes. Y para aquellos que necesitan conducir, tenemos asistencia de parking. Solo son $5 en C Park. Y tenemos ese parque de parking que cierne a las 10:00 p.m., así que nos llevarán a aquí entonces. Cuéntenos si necesitan una voucher de parking. Quiero agradecer a la gente que nos ha unido, incluidos los interpreters. Tenemos a Pablo Spavuda y a Alison Oster, si no me equivoco, que nos han ayudado con la interpretación. Estuvieron aquí el año pasado mientras trabajamos en la Ley de Derechos de los Trabajadores domésticos. Gracias de nuevo por estar aquí hoy. Quiero dejar a la gente saber que si tienen necesidades de cuidado de niños, también les hemos hecho disponible sin costo. Solo告诉我们 si tienen necesidades de cuidado de niños, si están en los pisos y necesitan cuidado, por favor告诉我们. Si alguien está aquí que necesita una persona para cuidar su niño cuando están aquí, hay personas que pueden ayudar y es gratis. Así que告诉我们 si necesitas ayuda para el cuidado de niños. Con eso, sabemos que tenemos mucha gente que se ha inscrito para testificar. He revisado con algunos que han ayudado a organizar la presentación de hoy. Vamos a hacer un minuto y medio, y sé que es diferente del normal de dos minutos. Quiero darles un aviso sobre eso porque a veces cuando he estado en la audiencia y he tenido 30 segundos cortados, realmente cambia las cosas para mí. Así que quería darles un aviso temprano de que vamos a hacer un minuto y medio para el testimonio público. Oh, tengo que acelerarme. Lo siento, hablo rápido. Así que para la interpretación, voy a acelerarme un poco. Así que vamos a hacer un minuto y medio en lugar de dos minutos. Gracias, alcaldesa González. Con eso, solo tengo unos comentarios de abertura. Quiero asegurarme de que también estamos muy claros sobre el proceso que se nos ha incluido para la consideración de esta legislación del Consejo de Seattle. Esto viene de la cabeza de nosotros tener discusiones durante los últimos meses, tanto con la industria como con los trabajadores, hablando del paso de la iniciativa 124, hablando del hecho de que pasó por el 77% de los votantes de Seattle. Y orgullosa de ser un voto en la ciudad de Seattle que trabajó en esa legislación o que trabajó para apoyar el aprobamiento del voto. Y también orgullosa de estar aquí ahora para hablar de las lecciones aprendidas. La implementación es crítica. Cuando pensamos en la implementación, ¿cuáles son las lecciones aprendidas que tenemos para volver y mirar la legislación ante nosotros? Sabemos que esto afecta desproporcionadamente a los trabajadores que son personas de color, mujeres, trabajadores inmigrantes. Y tenemos la oportunidad aquí de asegurarnos de que la voluntad de los votantes se cumpla y que también lo hagamos implementable, trabajable, para los diversos trabajadores que trabajan en la industria. Realmente emocionada por escuchar todos ustedes. Y quiero simplemente llegar al corazón de la publicidad aquí. Y quiero ver si hay otros alcaldes que tengan algo más que decir antes de lanzarnos. Sí. Gracias, alcaldesa Bagshaw. Antes de entrar en el testimonio público, solo como recordatorio para la gente, tenemos un horario completo ante nosotros. Y voy a empezar en el principio. El 21 de marzo tuvimos nuestra revisión del estado de la iniciativa 124. Hay un memo del personal central que ha sido disponible en el registro público y podemos hacerlo disponible para la gente aquí también, si la gente está interesada. El 4 de abril tuvimos la oportunidad de escuchar a los trabajadores de los hoteles y sus historias sobre trabajar en la industria. El 2 de mayo tuvimos la oportunidad de escuchar a los gerentes de la industria y sus mejores prácticas y algunos de sus pensamientos sobre la iniciativa 124 y el proceso para avanzar en términos de recomendaciones. El 24 de junio, la legislación fue referida al comité completo para la consideración. Y el 27 de junio tuvimos la oportunidad de tener una discusión completa en nuestra audiencia, que fue la semana pasada, y tener una discusión sobre la legislación. Hoy estamos teniendo una audiencia pública en la noche para tratar de acomodar un espacio completo como vemos hoy. Y también tendremos una discusión sobre la legislación y la identificación de los temas, que es nuestra forma de identificar varias posibles políticas y amendamientos que la gente puede querer flagear para el futuro. Eso estará el 11 de julio, de nuevo, colegas, es el jueves siguiente. Después de eso, vamos a tener otra discusión el 18 de julio. Y luego no tendremos posiblemente un voto hasta el 1 de agosto, agregando una semana adicional, con la oportunidad de volver en agosto y tener un voto final. Probablemente el domingo segundo antes de que nos dejemos ir por una breve represalia en agosto. Así que solo quiero darles ese update y dejar a la gente saber que esa información también puede ser publicada en nuestro sitio web. Gracias por ese recordatorio. ¿Algunos otros comentarios, colegas?
Tengo que excusarme de una hora. Lo siento, tengo una reunión de 6:30 en el distrito U.
Gracias, alcaldesa Bagshaw. ¿Algunos otros comentarios? Bien, genial. Así que Aaron, si pudieras, por favor, pongamos un minuto y 30 segundos en el reloj y empezaremos. Vamos a hacer nuestro mejor para asegurarnos de que pasemos una serie de paneles de la industria y luego trabajadores, una serie de panelistas de la industria, trabajadores, y vamos por el proceso de esa manera. Muchas gracias a todos por estar aquí. Y la primera persona a inscribirse es, y voy a llamar a algunos para que puedan formarse, eso sería realmente genial, Ana Vendre de Hilton, Dan Austin y Jessica Horton. Y solo asegúrense que cuando todos vengan al micrófono, estén muy cerca de este micrófono justo aquí. Y hay dos alturas diferentes. Y todos están bien para formarse. Y hay dos microfonos en caso de que uno quiera tomar uno y otro quiere tomar el otro.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes y solo quieren estar muy cerca si pueden.
Realmente cerca. Mi nombre es Anne Vanderheijt. Soy la directora de ventas y marketing para Hilton Seattle. Mi primer trabajo en la industria fue como secretaria de ventas en el día en que todavía nos llamaban secretarias. He estado en la industria 35 años y he trabajado en un número de diferentes capacidades en propiedad, en un número de hoteles de varias marcas. Y también he trabajado en ventas globales y como director regional de ventas para una empresa de gestión de propiedad. Nos importan profundamente nuestros empleados, su salud, su bienestar y seguridad. Por eso yo y mis colegas apoyamos entusiasticamente la legislación de pone la pánico en el país y la proporcionamos a nuestro personal. Fuimos orgullosos de que pasara a nivel nacional. Así que, ¿por qué es parte de esta legislación? La gente y los negocios son afectados. ¿Por qué el arranque? Gracias.
Muchas gracias, Anne. Dan, seguida de Jessica, y luego Linda Morton.
Gracias por invitarme. Soy Dan Austin, dueño de Pele and Press. Tenemos a Dave Montour, el dueño de West Five en West Seattle, Distrito 1. Y bienvenidos a West Seattle, creo.
Gracias.
Estoy aquí hoy hablando a cargo del Comité de Asuntos del Gobierno del Chamber de Comercio de West Seattle. He operado mi negocio en West Seattle, llegando a casi cinco años, con un 4.1 año de retención por mis empleados. Si estuviéramos hablando de pones de pánico solo, no estaría aquí hoy. La conclusión de los negocios ancillares es mi preocupación. Así que negocios que no son negocios operados en hoteles, alquilan espacio desde dentro. No entiendo por qué estamos añadiendo negocios pequeños que no están en la legislación que pasó con el 70% más. Estamos añadiendo adicionalmente a ello. Ese es un gran preocupante de mi. Mirando la despesa de atención médica que se requeriría de esas personas, $1,680 es $27 por hora para un empleado de 20 horas. Eso tomaría inmediatamente mi negocio si dirigiese esos números en un hotel. Iría de rentable a negativo $38,000 en ese año. Eso no es una despesa que pueda ser tomada por el negocio pequeño. De nuevo, si estamos hablando de pones de pánico, apoyo total. Apoyo a la legislación que pasó previa. No entiendo y no he oído un argumento para saber por qué los negocios pequeños están siendo traídos a esta legislación. Espero escuchar eso. Ojalá que se elimine.
Muchas gracias. Bienvenidos, Jessica. Bienvenidos, Jessica, seguida de Linda, y luego Masaba Himari. Y realmente lo siento por cualquier pronunciación errónea. Es mi culpa. Gracias, Jessica.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jessica Horton y soy la directora de apoyo de la gente para el Pan Pacific Hotel y South Lake Union. Como graduada de la Universidad de Seattle, he trabajado en diversas industrias diferentes en Seattle, incluyendo la policía, servicio social, educación y gestión de la cadena de suministro. He estado en la hospitalidad durante los últimos dos años. Nos importan profundamente la salud y el bienestar y la seguridad de nuestros asociados. Así que proporcionamos cobertura de atención médica de alto nivel a nuestros empleados, lo que excede el nivel de oro ofrecido en el intercambio. cubrimos el 89% del costo de la cobertura de los asociados solo y el 80% del costo para la cobertura familiar. A pesar de esto, esta pieza de legislación requiere una despesa adicional de dinero de información tomada del intercambio, cuyas tasas no son negociadas ni son acertadamente representadas en el costo de oro. Adicionalmente, los requisitos de tiempo de trabajo propuestos son nonsensuales. Si un empleado exige el carga laboral obligatoria por un cuadrado, pagamos tiempo de trabajo por todas las horas trabajadas. Cuéntenme una otra industria que paga tiempo de trabajo por el trabajo del día entero. Puedo decirles que desde mi experiencia en gobierno, empresas no lucrativas y grandes cadenas de suministro, ciertamente no. Al pasar esta legislación, estás destrozando la industria de la hospitalidad y especialmente los negocios pequeños.
Eso es difícil de seguir. Seguirte será Masab, y luego también dos personas después, Stefan Morts y Jan Jing. Bienvenidos, Linda.
Gracias. Hola, soy Linda Delela Morton y soy co-entraña de Teraplata Restaurant y sirvo como presidente de la Alianza de restaurantes de Seattle. La Alianza de restaurantes de Seattle apoya más de 2,700 restaurantes en la ciudad de Seattle, la mayoría de los cuales son negocios pequeños. Durante los últimos años, hemos estado extremadamente preocupados por las barreras que han sido impuestas a los negocios pequeños en la ciudad de Seattle. Estoy aquí hoy porque esta legislación que están discutiendo no es solo sobre hoteles, es sobre negocios pequeños y restaurantes como el mío. También soy privilegiada para servir en el Consejo de Asesorías de Negocios de la Mayor Dirk junto con ustedes, alcaldesa Mosqueta. Y con todo este tiempo dedicado a redactar esta legislación, nunca hemos tenido este asunto traído a nuestra atención para temas o feedback. Saben que esto afecta a los negocios pequeños, escribieron la legislación de esa manera. Sin embargo, la decisión fue tomada no para buscar la input de la comunidad de negocios pequeños. La legislación establece requisitos de atención médica significativa sobre restaurantes y otros negocios pequeños, mucho más que lo requerido por la ACA, simplemente porque alquilan espacio desde un hotel. La despesa para estos negocios pequeños es de 1,680 dólares por empleado de tiempo parcial. Eso es bastante excesivo. Eso significa que un restaurante o un negocio pequeño tendrá requisitos completamente diferentes si están en un hotel en lugar de un edificio de oficina a lo largo de la calle. La comunidad de negocios pequeños y la comunidad restaurante están juntas. El negocio restaurante es un negocio muy duro. Puedo decirles eso desde la experiencia. Y también es una parte muy importante del corazón de nuestra ciudad.
Linda, ¿puedo que te termine para nosotros y nos tomaremos tu testimonio escrito?
Okay. Eso suena bien. ¿Qué dijiste?
Dije que si puedes terminar para nosotros y luego nos tomaremos tu testimonio escrito.
Lo terminaré de inmediato. Básicamente, solo estoy preguntando que la legislación final no incluye a los negocios pequeños y restaurantes en la misma categoría que los hoteles corporativos o ambos, hoteles pequeños y hoteles de familia en la misma categoría que los hoteles corporativos. Deberíamos de animar a los negocios pequeños e inmigrantes a prosperar, no solo, y esto es justo al contrario.
Genial.
Muchas gracias.
Genial. Hola, Masab. Seguirte será Stefan Yan, y luego Sean Vink de Romeo's.
Hola, mi nombre es Masab Jimari. Soy el director de operaciones en el marco de agua de la ciudad de Seattle. He estado en esta industria durante más de 15 años, he trabajado en varios departamentos, diferentes roles. La mayor parte de mi tiempo ha sido pasado en las áreas de Seattle, hoteles pequeños, hoteles grandes. Y no creo que haya encontrado ningún líder en esta industria que no se preocupe por sus asociados. Son una extensión de nuestra familia. Nos importan profundamente ellos. Ven a trabajar todos los días para interactuar con ellos, para estar con ellos. A veces estamos con nuestros asociados más tiempo que con nuestros propios miembros de familia. Y nuestro establishment ya tenía pones de pánico en place y estamos muy felices de que fuera a nivel nacional. Pero necesitamos darse cuenta de que esto es mucho más que solo pones de pánico. Creo que se hace que es sobre pones de pánico, pero como hemos oído hoy, todos apoyan pones de pánico. No hay argumento. Esta ley requiere dinero arbitrario. Estamos animando a la gente a declinar la cobertura de atención médica para poner dinero en su bolsillo. Y no creo que eso sea lo que se pretendía y no creo que eso sea lo que los votantes querían cuando votaron. Pero eso es lo que estamos animando a los asociados a hacer. Creo que necesitamos mirar la calidad de la cobertura, no solo el costo. En cuanto al tiempo de trabajo, creo que solo queremos estar en línea con todas las otras empresas, todas las otras industrias. Queremos asegurarnos de que cualquiera que trabaje tiempo de trabajo es pagado por ese tiempo de trabajo. Pero creo que estamos castigando al establishment por el día completo. Y es mi turno. Gracias.
Siguiente, tenemos a Stefan Morts, seguido de Yan Deng, seguido de Sean Vink, y luego Shannon Sharon.
Buenas tardes, alcaldes. No estoy seguro si puedo pasar por todo esto en un minuto y medio. Y quiero dar un saludo a todos los que trabajaron todo el día hoy y están en el salón de overflow en los pisos viendo esta audiencia en una pantalla, que, ya sabes, es, desafortunadamente, un poco simbólico. Así que buenas tardes. Quiero agradecerles el trabajo que han puesto en esto y el compromiso que han mostrado para proteger a los trabajadores de hoteles y para implementar y cuidar la visión que los votantes aprobaron con la iniciativa 124. Los trabajadores están aquí hoy para compartir sus experiencias y exigir acción. En 2016, los votantes escucharon historias de los trabajadores de hoteles y actuaron, votando el 77% para aprobar la iniciativa 124. En la mañana de la Navidad, en las decisiones del tribunal de juicio, líderes de la ciudad escucharon de los trabajadores y actuaron. Y eso es realmente, realmente apreciado. Las cuatro ordenanzas ahora siendo discutidas reflejan una deep listening en parte de la ciudad. Carregan las provisiones clave de la iniciativa 124, protección contra violencia en el lugar de trabajo y la harassment, límites en el carga laboral de la casa, acceso amplio a la atención médica familiar y seguridad de trabajo accesible. Dos elementos de la iniciativa original que son de crucial importancia y han sido preservados en la legislación como introducción son la cobertura de los negocios ancillares de hoteles y la expectación de que los trabajadores sean capaces de acceder a la atención médica equivalente a nivel oro. Dado el estupendo inversión pública en promover el viaje y el turismo en Seattle y los masivos beneficios acarreando a las compañías privadas de capital de activos, trustes de inwesting real y otros dueños de hoteles de Seattle real, la cobertura de los negocios ancillares de hoteles asegura que este inversión pública va a crear más buenos trabajos y captura más la rentabilidad de los hoteles de Seattle en forma de beneficios para los trabajadores de Seattle. Indexando el valor del dólar para la despesa de atención médica requerida bajo la legislación a la costa de un plan de nivel oro ayuda a asegurar que los trabajadores podrán poder pagar un plan de atención médica de calidad con un deductivo y otros costos asociados que sean suficientemente bajos para que los trabajadores realmente puedan llegar al doctor cuando necesiten. La legislación propuesta también refleja...
Stefan, si pudieras terminar para nosotros y luego también estaríamos contentos de tomar su testimonio escrito.
Bueno, lo subirán en escritura, pero, ya sabes, solo tengo que decir que esto es lo correcto de hacer y realmente apreciamos su liderazgo en este asunto. Gracias.
Y para cualquiera que tenga testimonio escrito, estamos contentos de tomar ese testimonio escrito y hararemos un pequeño paquete para todos los colegas del consejo. Y sé que, Linda, también tenías algún testimonio escrito. Yan Deng, seguido de Sean Vink, y luego Shannon Sharon, y agregando Braxton Myers. ¿Está Yan aquí? Solo un segundo. Creo que está viniendo. Okay. Señor, ¿por qué no vamos adelante contigo? Y luego, si Yan está disponible, ¿es usted, Yan? Bienvenido. Gracias por estar aquí.
Hola, a todos.
¿Puedes acercarte un poco más a ti? Deberías poderlo bajar. Gracias.
Mi nombre es Yan. Trabajo en el hotel de Hilton de Seattle. Soy la casa. Estoy aquí para dejar que ustedes sepan que la seguridad de la salud es muy importante para nuestra familia y mí. Así que tenemos una seguridad de salud en mi hotel porque somos un hotel unionista, pero mi hermana no tiene la buena seguridad de salud. También ellos. Así que hay la iniciativa 124, la seguridad de la salud, proteger es muy bueno para su familia. Así que es por eso que estoy aquí para dejar que ustedes sepan que esta ley 124 es muy importante para que se aprobase para trabajadores unionistas o no unionistas.
Muchas gracias. Realmente aprecio. Gracias por esperar, Sean. Seguido de Sean, estará Shannon Braxton, y luego Destiny Sund.
Okay. Mi nombre es Verk.
Lo siento mucho por eso.
Está bien. Soy Sean Verk. Soy el dueño de Romeo's Pizza. Romeo's ha estado en Seattle por casi 39 años. Me entré hace 12 años. Y estamos en el terreno de la suite de homewood suite, negocio ancillar, como decimos, ahora de repente, pero nunca fuimos informados de esto. Solo me di cuenta hace un par de días. Lo que quiero decir es que entiendo a todos los empleados que han estado conmigo durante todos estos años. Así que todo el mundo es como familia para nosotros. Nos cuidamos de ellos y entiendo que necesitan atención médica. Pero somos un negocio pequeño y eso significa que empiezo a las 8 de la mañana y termino a las 11:00 p.m. Mis hijos son ahora mayores. Generalmente los veo solo cuando están durmiendo. Y tratamos muy duro de trabajar duro. La propuesta aquí es básicamente, la entiendo, es solo decir que necesitamos proporcionar atención médica. Ahora la pregunta surge es, estaba haciendo algo de matemáticas, tengo 12 empleados en uno de mis locaciones. A $560, les estamos pagando $80,000 al año en beneficios. Y a 1,680, les estamos pagando $240,000 al año. Y yo mismo no gano ese tipo de dinero. Así que la pregunta realmente para ustedes es, ¿de dónde viene este dinero? ¿De dónde creen que viene el dinero? Y cómo responden eso? En 12 años en esta ciudad, no he visto que la ciudad haya hecho nada por nosotros, los negocios pequeños. Ustedes piensan que solo ven y van, pero empleamos a gente. Entiendo si ustedes quieren, ya saben, para los negocios corporativos entendemos que es un mayor beneficio. Para nosotros no es. Y cobramos, ¿qué?, $12 o $13 por un sandwich completo. Y estoy bastante seguro de que si empiezo a cobrarle $20, no vendrá a mi lugar y tendrá ese sandwich. Así que terminaré. Entiendo eso. Solo quiero ver cuando comenzó esta iniciativa. Ustedes dijeron que esto era para la seguridad. Todo de repente esto es atención médica y ustedes están pidiendo dinero de nosotros. ¿Cómo llegamos con todo este dinero? Eso significa que estamos forzados a cerrar todos nuestros negocios y ustedes nos están empujando fuera de esta ciudad. Eso no es correcto cuando hemos estado parte de esta ciudad durante mucho tiempo. Somos negocios pequeños y necesitamos que se tome en consideración. Así que solo ayúdenos en ese sentido.
Gracias por estar aquí. Shannon, seguido de Braxton, seguido de Destiny Sund, y luego Sonia Guevara.
Buenas tardes, a todos. Mi nombre es Shannon Sharon y soy miembro de la asociación de hoteles de Seattle. También soy la directora de gestión de hoteles Sorrento. Y empecé mi carrera como persona de autobús. Fue llamado un "cabrón de autobús" en ese momento. He sido un servidor de comida. He trabajado como host, en la oficina principal, he trabajado mi camino. Y siento muy orgullosa de mi ascenso y la experiencia que tengo. Y en esa experiencia, eso viene con entender lo que entra en cada categoría de trabajo, porque he hecho todos los trabajos, con la excepción de ingeniería. Así que esa experiencia de 20 años me ha traído un poco de perspectiva. Así que en los últimos tres años, mi perspectiva es que he conocido a todos los que están en la mesa, con la excepción de la alcaldesa person Sawant. He conocido a ustedes. He escrito probablemente 30, 40, 50 cartas. He dado su mejor, honesta y verdadera oportunidad para realmente mostrarles y decirles cómo trabajamos en nuestra industria, porque a través de este proceso no hemos sido sinceramente incluidos. Hemos sido invitados a reuniones donde se tomaron notas copias. Y luego cuando salieron las reglas, realmente no había identificación o representación para lo que necesitábamos. Y las soluciones que realmente presentamos que eran genuinas, honestas y útiles. Y así como miramos esto ahora, esta nueva pieza de legislación, es como si los pasos y los marcadores hubieran nuevamente sido movidos inequívocamente y extendidos. Creo que este nuevo brief es arbitrario y creo que requiere otra discusión genuina donde realmente nos preocupamos por lo que estamos diciendo. Trabajamos en conjunto como grupo. Hay un camino, pero eso requiere que entiendan las implicaciones y los impactos de nuestro negocio y eso incluye las ramificaciones financieras y se preocupan por eso, porque ese rincón que directamente correlaciona con el negocio pequeño es directo. Así que pido que piensen en negocios pequeños y grandes como ustedes recogen su coro. Gracias.
Braxton, seguido de Destiny, seguido de Sonia, seguido de Rosemary Alegría. Y si la gente puede tratar de mantenerse dentro del minuto y 30, sé que es difícil y tendremos más oportunidades para el testimonio. Y lo siento en advance por no permitir el total. Así que muchas gracias por estar aquí, Braxton, y siento por mantenerlos esperando.
Haré lo mejor.
Gracias.
Mi nombre es Braxton Myers. Represento al dueño, la familia que posee la calidad y las suites down there, The Space Needle. Esta familia, esta propiedad es propiedad de una familia que inmigró a Estados Unidos como primer generación inmigrantes coreanos en 1976. El patriarcado de la familia se metió a través de la universidad y creó su propio negocio en Nueva Orleans como negocio de importe y exportación de joyas. Desafortunadamente, Katrina golpeó y eliminó todos sus tiendas. Perdió todo. Y cuando estaba esperando su cheque de su compañía de seguros, su compañía de seguros se volvió bancarrota. Dejó Nueva Orleans sin dinero y obtuvo un préstamo de su familia para comprar una pequeña propiedad en California. Desde entonces, ha construido su negocio y pudo vender dos propiedades en California, incluyendo su hogar personal, para comprar un hotel en el centro de Seattle. Quiero asegurarme de que todos en este comité entienden que no todos los hoteles de la ciudad son propiedad de una gran empresa. No somos propiedad de hoteles Hilton. Somos un franquiciador de hoteles de elección. Somos un negocio de familia y siempre y para siempre lo seremos. Estos tipos de legislaciones no afectan solo a las grandes corporaciones multinacionales, afectan a las familias, afectan a los negocios de familia. Tomo ofensa personal al hecho de que cada vez que se habla de la iniciativa 124 en los medios de comunicación, se presenta como algo para proteger a los empleados de sus empleadores. Soy el empleador que ustedes están refiriendo a tener que proteger a los empleados. Te deseo que vengas a mi hotel y pregunte a cualquiera de mis empleados si o no sienten que necesitan ser protegidos de mí como empleador. Puedo garantizarles que no lo hacen. Estoy muy, muy, muy pasionado por esta situación, porque en el momento en que este proyecto pasa con la legislación de seguros intacta, esto cuesta nuestro negocio un adicional $876,000 al año. Y si pasa, incluyendo todas las iniciativas con la iniciativa 124, nos cuesta un adicional $1.26 millones. Eso renderiza nuestro negocio insolvente y bancarrota. Periodo. That's not before depreciation. That's true dollars and cents. This renders our family business, that they've worked for 45 years to be able to, a massive amount of money, to be able to purchase and operate, completely insolvent overnight.
Thank you, Braxton.
Thank you.
So welcome. Thank you, Destiny, followed by Destiny is Sonia Rosemary Alegría, followed by... Oh, I'm so sorry. From La Le... I'll find out. Anna, maybe you can help me. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Destiny Sund, and I'm the owner of The Confectional. I'm here on behalf of the Seattle Restaurant Alliance, which represents 2,700 restaurants, most of which are small businesses. The Confectional opened in Pike Place Market in 2006. Since then, we've survived multiple new city laws imposed on its business community by increasing the cost of our product, streamlining our labor, and unfortunately, cutting hours. The legislation you're considering will impact restaurants throughout the city by simply having a hotel as a landlord. You're proposing including small businesses in what you're calling the hotel workers' legislation. And this doesn't make sense. We all support making sure the hard-working employees in Seattle are safe from harassment and violence. As you know, the state passed panic button requirements for all hotels across Washington, and it's great to see that this issue has already been addressed. As we take a closer look, we see it's not just focused on safety, but it extends job retention and healthcare expenditure requirements to non-hotel employees and small businesses with no relationship to the hotel's core operation. What impacts one restaurant in Seattle impacts us all. We're a community. We're heroes. We're job creators. I know directly that running a small business, especially a restaurant in Seattle, is not easy. I also know many of you say you care about small businesses, and I thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. So we have Sonia Guevara, Rosemary Alegría. I'm going to try this. I'm really apologizing if folks know anybody from Lulay Hotel. Therati Rosendow? Okay, thank you for reading my mind. And then Michael Clark. Appreciate your understanding. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name's Sonia, and I'm a housekeeper. Hotel workers need this protection because, and we have fought for a long time to get them. Housekeeping is a very difficult job. Housekeepers have pain and injuries because we have required to do too many rooms in a short amount of time. My mom and I, both are workers, work as housekeepers. And I did the job even while I was pregnant with my daughter Zoe, because I need to work and support my family. We have limits of the numbers of rooms. We are required to clean because we have a union. But all hotel workers need the same protections. Housekeeping is also a dangerous job. We have never know if a guest will come back to the room or what they might do. Without this law in place, we also don't know what our boss might do if we report sexual harassment. The hotel companies are taking credit for panic buttons and for taking sexual harassment seriously. But they are only doing it because workers have pushed it in. We need to keep pushing them to take action and keep their employees safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rosemary Alegría. Bienvenidos, followed by our friend. And then Michael Clark, followed by Steve Vaskovsky. Yes.
Buenas tardes.
We will give the full time for translation as well, because it's simultaneous. So we'll do three minutes, recognizing a minute and 30 is the amount that you're actually speaking for. So vamos a traducir en el mismo tiempo. Si tienes espacio, está bien por él.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Buenas tardes a cada uno de ustedes.
Good evening to everyone of you.
Me llamo Rosemary Alegría.
My name is Rosemary Alegría.
Trabajo en Westin Hotel.
I work at Westin Hotel.
Soy una housekeeper.
I'm a housekeeper.
Tengo trabajando aquí en Seattle 10 años.
I've been working here in Seattle for 10 years.
Y 15 años en Perú.
And 15 years in Peru.
Housekeeper es uno de los trabajos más fuertes que trabaja la mujer.
Housekeeping is one of the hardest jobs that any woman can do.
Específicamente la mujer.
Specifically women.
Porque si vamos a diferentes hoteles, encontramos mujeres housekeepers.
Because if you go to different hotels, we find women doing housework.
En diciembre 2016, obtuvimos la ganancia de la ley I-124.
In December 2016, we had a legislation, E-154, approved.
Esta ley nos trajo muchos beneficios a nosotros como trabajadoras housekeeper.
That law brought a lot of benefit to us as housekeeper workers.
Una de las preguntas que me he estado haciendo es porque la razón por la cual quieren quitarnos estos beneficios a través de esta ley.
So I've been wondering, why is it that through this law, they want to take away all these benefits?
Me siento un poco desamparada e insegura.
I feel powerless and insecure.
Como mujer y como madre.
As a woman, as a mother.
Pues en el lugar donde laboro, hay muchos riesgos. Y precisamente acerca de esta ley, yo me sentía más amparada y segura.
And precisely because at the place where I work, there are many risks. And through this law, I was feeling very secure and protected.
Quisiera entender muchas veces cosas que no comprendo. Una de ellas, el que hayan personas que quieran quitar beneficios a una mujer trabajadora de housekeeper.
And there are several things that I would like to understand. One of those is why there are people who would like to take away the benefits of a woman worker.
Que nos trae seguridad como mujeres en el lugar donde nos desempleamos día a día, trabajando un arduo trabajo.
That brings a security to women who work day-to-day in a place in such a hard job that we do.
Vine aquí representando a muchas de esas mujeres que trabajamos en diferentes hoteles.
And coming here representing all of these women who work in hotels doing this hard work.
Para pedirles.
To ask you.
Y que puedan comprendernos.
To please understand this.
Cómo nos sentimos como mujeres.
How we feel as women.
Si pretenden quitar esta ley.
If you're planning to remove or take away this law.
Que trae beneficios a nosotros de seguridad y beneficios para poder lograr muchas cosas que queremos lograr como mujeres.
This law that brings us benefits and safety and that allows us to achieve everything that we need as women.
Tenemos un programa en el hotel que se llama Green Choice.
We have a program at the hotel called Green Choice.
Este programa les permite a los huéspedes ingresar a los cuartos y no tener el servicio día a día.
This allows the clients to go into the room so that they wouldn't need to have daily service.
Al cabo de dos o tres días.
Puedes concluir por nosotros, por el tiempo.
Okay.
Gracias.
Gracias por el tiempo que me han dado, y lo único que quiero...
And thank you for the time you've given me.
Lo único que quiero pedirles a cada uno de ustedes.
This is all that I want to ask to each one of you.
Necesitamos derechos que beneficien a la mujer trabajadora.
We need rights.
Gracias.
That benefit women workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias, Rosemary Alegría. And welcome. And I'm so sorry I mispronounced your name. If you can introduce yourself for us, followed by Michael Clark, Steve Vaskovsky, and then Nerise Deras.
Hello, my name is Thierry Roturo.
Thank you.
Can you say that?
Terry.
Yes.
Here we go. People sometimes call me Terry on accident.
People also call me the chef in a hat.
Okay, that I can remember, too.
Easier to remember. I'm the owner of Lulay Kitchen and Bar. I've owned and operated my business downtown for about five and a half years. I employ about 59 people. And I currently lease the space in the Sheraton Grand, which is the extent of my business relation with the hotel. I have nothing to do with hotel housekeeping. And I'm definitely backing up the need of protecting anyone who's working at any place. So I'm on the board with that one. I'm just trying to understand. And I read through the healthcare requirement, and I can't understand why you would force my small business to pay up all the way to $1,680 for part-time employee per month. I thought this legislation was about panic button, and I'm completely confused about why I'm here tonight in terms of trying to understand what you guys are trying to accomplish here. So it would be very helpful if it could be concisely said that what you're trying to accomplish and how. Because I don't know that I should be involved with this. And I certainly don't like it whatsoever. So thank you very much. Let's get back to work.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Michael Clark. I'm the general manager of the Renaissance Seattle Hotel. I also serve on the board of the Seattle Hotel Association. I've worked in the hospitality industry for 31 years. I started my career as a dishwasher. I've been a bus boy, a bus person, a server, worked up all through the ranks, up until the time I became a general manager. I work very hard every day to foster a culture of fairness, communication, and respect within the hotel. I'm proud to support the 250 hotel employees that we have at Renaissance Seattle. I think of them as family. I'm interested in them both personally, professionally. Their well-being means more to me than anything that they do in their workday. This legislation is about far more than panic buttons, as we all know. The law requires an arbitrary cash expenditure to provide access to medical care. And how much you spend does not determine the quality of your coverage. I think that's something very important for the council to consider. We should be talking about the type of coverage and not the cost. It's time to pause and get this right. We're happy to pay overtime for hours worked, but there's no other industry that pays overtime for the entire day because somebody goes over by 1%. We've been talking about hotel employees, and that's not what this legislation is now about. It's time to pause and get this right. It's far more sweeping than just hotels. We need, you need to understand the small businesses that work within the hotels. And this was just introduced last Monday. I know you're going on vacation, but we don't want a repeat of what's happening in our court system now. It's time to pause and get this right.
Thank you very much, Michael. The next person we have should be Steve. Steve, oh, great. Hi, Steve from Hyatt. Nerise Deras, and then Lula Hale, followed by Jessica Holton. Holton, hi.
Hello, how are you doing? My name is Steve Vaskovsky, and I'm the general manager of the Grand Hyatt Hyatt Olive Eight. I have been a part of the industry for 40 years, all of it with Hyatt. Today is my 40th anniversary. I'm proud to be with the company. And, you know, I take offense of small business and large. We're all very important to the vital economy of Seattle. And I also take offense to how it has been at least portrayed that we don't care about our employees. Everything I stand for, everything our company stands for surrounds our employees. We were voted on the Business Journal as the fourth-best place to work in Seattle. That didn't come by itself. That was not an in-house. That was an outside service that provided that. Everything we do is about the employees. And when this whole initiative started and the vote came through, it was about the panic buttons. And from that standpoint, you will find a unanimous approval from the Hotel Association that the safety and security of our employees is of the paramount. We support the panic buttons, and that has been echoed with the voices you've heard. Not only that, but it goes beyond that. And we're talking about the adjunct businesses. Those are a part of our network of family. We support local endeavors to make sure that they can give a flavor of Seattle.
Thank you.
Please, please, take a look at this, because we're making way too rushed decisions. We have to sit down, understand what it is. It's affecting small and large businesses. It's about the economy.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Nerise Deras, followed by Lula Hale, followed by Jessica Holton and Jeremy Oden. Do we have folks that have come from downstairs that we're waiting for potentially? Nerise Deras, Lula Hale, welcome. Go ahead and take any microphone you prefer. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lula Haley. I am from East Africa. I am employee of Ayuater Hotel. I work in housekeeping department. Yeah, I talk, I asking for this panic button about whatever all housekeeping we need. But I know you guys, all of them, they're talking about the money, about how they will afford a small business, something. What about us? We need safety, too. We're doing good job. We need safety. We don't do something to make them suffer or something to make them pay money, whatever. But everybody is the thing. If we are safety, we're doing good job more, and more guests coming, more money, they make it. But this is thinking about us, too, not only about yourself. I understand your business, maybe the money costs a lot of things. I understand that. What about us? You be human being. We are human, too. We are women. We need protection. This I-24, we needed. 216 is they said, okay. But still, you guys fighting for us, not to give us, some of you. Some of you give us bad machine. We don't even hear us, nobody, until I get accident over there. So I need this one hotel member or not hotel member, or union member, not union member. We need it. So please, you listen to us and don't fight on us, you guys, please. We're still human being. Even we are immigrants here. We deserve this I-24. Thank you.
Thank you, Lula. Next, we have Jessica Holton, followed by Jeremy Oden, followed by Ricardo Ortega, and then Mac McGrath. Did I mispronounce that? Sorry, folks. Let me start this again. Do we have Jessica here? Okay, I'm going to go past Jessica. Jeremy Oden? No, Jeremy. Oh, Jeremy, great, thank you. Didn't see you back there. Welcome.
I'd like to thank the council for their, I'd like to thank the council for their hard work on this issue. My name is Jeremy Oden. I'm speaking on behalf of IATSE Local 15. Local 15 stands with our brothers and sisters in the hospitality industry in their fight for basic protections such as anti-harassment measures, safe workloads, and healthcare. We believe that it's reprehensible that these multibillion-dollar hotel chains believe that their workers, the people who make it possible for their hotels to even exist, aren't worth healthcare and humane working conditions. These employers can easily afford to give these protections to their workers. They're pinching pennies at the expense of the hard-working people that make the magic happen. IATSE knows a lot about making the magic happen. So we stand in solidarity with our brothers and sisters, represented and unrepresented. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you bringing here, Jeremy. Ricardo, hi.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ricardo Ortega, and I am a member of a community organization called the Legacy of Equality Leadership Organization, Oliloh. We are an organization of people of color and women who are fighting to improve the working and living conditions in our community. I am here to support the workers from the hotel industry. The immigrant women who work in the hotels are facing violence, harassment, conduct, and more than half will not report because they are fear of retaliation not being believed. And also, these workers need our support of this city, our community. Also, we have the power, and you have the power and the political and moral responsibility to stop the whole hotel industry to continue to accommodate sexual harassment and violence from the guest hotel at the expenses of the hotel workers. This legislation has proposed to send strong measures to the stalls, to the hotels, to shoot through the workers, and when the hotel guest has perpetuated violence, take an action ban against the person who cannot return to the hotel for a period of five years. The cost of healthcare is one of the main reasons of the vacancy in this country. This legislation is important because it's providing a healthcare access for hotel workers and their families. Also, it simplifies the administration for hotel employers and solidify the law against legal challenges from the hotel industry while upholding intent of the original initiative. Also, I would like to thank you, everybody who is here, because this is an issue important for our community that we have to resolve. The hotel workers... The hotel workers deserve not just respect, but also our solidarity in their fight for better working and living conditions.
Thank you, Ricardo. And we're happy to take your written testimony too. Mac McGrath, followed by Hong Zing, followed by Brianna Fox and Yoshi Takaba.
Honorable council members, my name is Mac McGrath. I work at the Embassy Suites in Pioneer Square. I'm a Local 8 member, and I wish to speak in favor of the hotel worker safety ordinances. Regulations that side with the worker in cases of sexual harassment and assault from guests are especially important for members of the marginalized communities such as immigrants or LGBT workers because we face additional barriers to reporting such incidents, such as fear of retaliation or not being believed. These were the fears of my coworker, Luis, when he was harassed by a guest in the breakfast restaurant where we work. The guest's crude comments and gestures were witnessed by a second coworker and were distressing to all three of us. We went with him to HR to report the incident. But when the offender reappeared a month later, we realized that management could not be trusted to do the right thing on their own volition. Luis considered calling out sick or leaving work early to avoid seeing the guest despite needing money for his upcoming wedding. He was incredibly distressed, and as his friend, I was angry that the hotel's inaction had put him in this position. Instead, we persisted, demonstrating that we knew our rights under the law, and we demanded that the guest be banned. In the process, we learned that the offender's husband was a highly valued Diamond member, and it was clear why management were dragging their feet. They will always side with high-ranking guests over us. But because of I-124, we asserted our rights and we got the guest removed and banned from the hotel. Having him removed and knowing he couldn't come back made us all feel empowered and safer, Luis most of all. Since we work in a public area, we can't simply be reassigned to another floor to avoid specific guests. The only way for us to feel safe was to have him banned from returning.
Thank you, Mac. And we're happy to take your written testimonies as well. Welcome. Hong Zing, welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Hong Zhang. I'm a housekeeper in the Double G Hotel by Sitak Airport. I have been working there as a housekeeper for five years already. And in my hotel, it's a union hotel, and we have the union health plan. My three kids and my husband and I, five of us are covered under my union plan. It's very important and very helpful for my family. So my family, my husband can do flexible work, and both of us can look after our two little kids so we don't have, give burden to this community. And we are more independent. So it is, if all of our workers are independent, so we can earn our respect from this country. We don't want to rely on it. And I just hear about the owners worry about the quality of their health insurance, the money they compensate to their workers. So the best is our UnitedHealth Plan. It's very important, the quality is very important. Our workers only pay $40 a month, and the employer pays the rest of the premium. And the physical is free for all of the family members. And there's only $20 for copay, there's deductible, and the insurance pays 90% and it covers the vision and dental. This is a perfect health plan. So if they worry about the quality of the health insurance, it's our UnitedHealth Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brianna? Great, thanks for waiting, Brianna. Brianna, followed by Yoshi Takaba, followed by Jeremy Mihah.
My name is Brianna Fox. I'm the HR Director for BMI Hospitality Management. We work with three Seattle hotels and one restaurant. Collectively, we employ over 200 people in the city of Seattle. One of the items that I'm most concerned by these proposed bills is the minimum required expenditure for medical care that employers would be required to pay. I do not believe that the numbers outlined in this bill accurately represent actual cost for an employer to provide affordable, high-quality coverage to their employees. We absolutely want to create a safe working environment for our employees. We absolutely want to provide affordable, high-quality healthcare for our employees. I don't believe that the cost outlined in this bill would achieve that. I think it would put undue hardship on the employer to provide cost-addish coverage. We currently provide 100% employer-paid, gold-level coverage to all of our employees here in Seattle. The employee pays nothing out of pocket for the monthly premium cost, and we're able to do that at a cost of $427 per month per employee. It's clear that the amounts listed in this bill do not accurately represent what it costs for an employer to provide high-quality healthcare coverage to their employees. This council is claiming that the proposed legislation is to provide affordable medical coverage for Seattle employees and their families and to create a safer working environment. I think if that were true, the union would not be exempt from these bills.
Yoshi, you will be followed by Jeremiah, followed by Lisa Cruz, and then Seattle Raging Grannies, who I think just left. If they can hear me, they are up next, if anybody wants to grab them. Thank you, Councilmember Bagshaw, for being here. And thank you for being here, Yoshi.
All right. My name is Yoshi Takaba. I'm an area manager for the three IHG properties in Seattle. I've been in the industry for 21 years now. Out of that 10 years I've been in housekeeping. I love housekeeping job. It's passionate, passion for me. I want to make my employees happy. And I take pride in being fair to my employees. It's, I'm sure everyone agrees, we provide number of checkouts, number of double beds, small details, but we want to be fair to everyone. And this initiative right now is proposing that what room, it hasn't been cleaned for 24 hours, count the strenuous room because the previous guest put a do not disturb sign or the housekeeper Susie didn't want to go clean five minutes later, then we get penalized by that. And that's just not fair. Because do you guys tell McDonald's to how to make Big Macs? There is no rule on that one, right? So why does the hotel industry have to get penalized by that? I just want you to think hard on that and be patient, think through, and just let us know how we can help you guys. We are here, just make sure employees are safe and happy at work. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Next, we have Jeremiah, followed by Lisa Cruz, and then Seattle Raging Grannies. And following that, Kimberly Spice.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeremiah. I've worked in the restaurant, banquets and hotel industry for 15 years now. And I'll tell you, it's hard to find a full-time, good-paying job that offers benefits. At times, I've had four part-time jobs to support my family. I've been a restaurant server, banquet server, bartender, banquet bartender, room service worker, banquet captain and supervisor. And presently, I work at the Edgewater Hotel. I've been there 13 years. It's been about three years that I am able to get enough hours for it to be my only job. The Edgewater offers medical benefits if its employees work 80 hours in a month. In good years, I've been able to maintain my insurance all year at this threshold. But this past year, even maintaining 80 hours average has been impossible. There were two, three months this year where I lost my insurance. This is my story as an employee with 13 years seniority at a union hotel. Where are banquet and restaurant servers in Seattle's predominantly non-union hotel market supposed to get health insurance? We can work 60 hours all across town in a week and still not have any access to healthcare benefits. That is why it is so important that healthcare access be made available to employees who work 80 hours or more per month and that workers at ancillary hotel businesses are covered as well. If the council were to make the threshold of 32 hours a week to qualify for health insurance, that would disqualify a vast majority of workers who work the same number of hours that I do. We cannot forget that hotels can and do distribute shifts strategically to keep people from meeting the threshold of healthcare. In addition, excluding ancillary hotel businesses from the healthcare requirement would provide another incentive for hotels to outsource their banquet and restaurant operations. This will only hurt workers and deny even more of us access to affordable health insurance. When drafting the final version of these laws, do not forget about us. Banquets and restaurant workers deserve dignity and respect for the profits we deliver, hotel owners.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Lisa Cruz? Hi, Lisa.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Cruz. I'm working to the Embassy Suites Housekeeping. Yeah, I really support this law because I'm the single mom and I get a pain for my workers. So we all know the hotel is a housekeeping heart of the hotel. So if you cared for the guests in the hotel, we really care too. That's why we work harder even when we get a relief pain because this job is not easy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Do we have Seattle Raging Grannies? I think we would see them if they were in the audience. They may have left. While we take a quick pause to see if they're here or coming up, want to let folks downstairs know, we maybe have eight seats up here. If you do want to come on up, we have some spots. So following that, Kimberly, is that you? Thanks for being here, Kimberly.
Thank you. I'm Kimberly Spice, and I am the owner of Biscuit Bitch. I have owned and operated
Have you testified here before? This might be a first for Seattle Channel to hear this language. We can start your time over, Kimberly.
Thank you. I've owned and operated my business in Seattle for nine years now, and I have three locations downtown and 52 employees now. And I lease a space in the Bell Town Inn. And that is the extent of my business relationship with the hotel. I have nothing to do with hotel housekeeping, and I don't understand the reason ancillary businesses are included in this legislation. Now, I do believe in taking care of my employees, and I believe in protections for the housekeepers. I fully supported the minimum wage law. I believe everyone has a right to health insurance. I stand for the housekeepers and the hotel workers. And I want them to have their protections and their healthcare. But I can't understand why my small business is being brought into this. I currently pay 75% of the cost of healthcare for my staff, and that is only $470 a month for an excellent Kaiser Gold Plan with dental and vision to all employees working 20 or more hours per week. I have a 3% retirement plan match. I do profit-sharing bonuses. I share all the profit over the summer. We're closed between Christmas and New Year's, and everybody gets a paid vacation. In order to be fair to all 52 of my employees, I would have to pay that higher cost for everyone, which would force me to take away some of the other benefits that I offer. That, I mean, we have a two-and-a-half-year retention rate right now. I have very happy employees. And I really don't want to do that. So that would force me to have to vacate my lease at Bell Town Inn. So what I'm here today to ask you is to please rewrite this legislation to take the non-hotel employees and small businesses like mine out of it.
Thank you very much, Kimberly. Next, we have Brandy Mitchell, followed by Stellano Hibrillo, followed by Ernie Burton. I'm sorry again about the pronunciation. I feel like George W. Bush a little bit up here when I keep doing this. So feel free to correct me. Brandy Mitchell, followed by Stellano. Brandy, thank you for, did I get your name right?
You did.
All right.
My name's Brandy Mitchell. I'm an area manager of IHG Properties in Seattle. We agree with hotel employees need to be safe. They need to be protected, so we don't disagree with that at all. We have processes and procedures and trainings to help our staff avoid injuries. That was part in the legislation. If injury does occur to a team member, we take that very seriously. We want them to report it. We want them to go to the hospital and be looked at. And there's an existing system to cover those situations. They're covered by our workman compensation claims. That's in addition to the healthcare we already provide to our staff. The legislation requires overtime for all hours worked, even if the employee exceeds the mandatory minimum workload by one square foot. We are happy to pay overtime, but this is extreme for our businesses and causes a lot of unnecessary track record keeping for the staff and whatnot. And we just want you just to be thoughtful in this process for everyone, the employees, the businesses, the small businesses.
Thank you. Stelliano, followed by Ernie, followed by Brian. It looks like maybe a group, Brian, Sheila and a team from Mediterranean Inn. Hi.
Hi, hi again. My name is Stelliano. I work at Embassy Suites Hotel Downtown. I came in America two years ago, and I have realized that Seattle needs control on jobs and rent. Time is not enough to mention everything that's happening on the hotel businesses. As we're talking, I'm having five days off this week and four of them last week. I pay crazy expensive medical plans, such as for last year, $156 per paycheck, $312 per month, which means $3,754 per year. This year, I changed to a cheaper one. $111 per paycheck, $222 per month, $2,664 per year. So I can save like $1,000 this year, which I will probably use for my rent, which has increased twice so far, and now it's going to be $1,200 per month. My total medical expenses last year, without including the medicines or drugs, were like $5,300. I even have a paycheck with me from last year, which is $73. $73 from my full-time job. I am one of the full-timers there at Embassy Suites who needs to work on other departments, server, breakfast attendant, evening reception, dishwasher, mop, sweep and deep clean, just to get some hours whenever it's slow or have a second job, which I do. And these informations I have with me, including the bills, can be verified, and they really need to change. I don't have any wife and kids, so I can get benefits from them. But that doesn't mean you don't have a family back home. So as I said before, Seattle needs control on jobs and rent, especially in the hotels.
Thank you, Stelliano. Thank you. Ernie Burton, followed by the group from Mediterranean Inn, and then George Kron.
My name is Ernie Burton, and I work at the Edgewater Hotel part-time. And I help support all the union members around town for all what they do and what they doing in the hotel industry. And I'm turning it over to Jose.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Ernie. And I'm here, standing Jorge Baran with Northwest Michigan Rights Project, and we just wanted to express our support for the legislation and here in solidarity with Ernie. Many of our clients are people who survived domestic violence, sexual assault and other crimes. And we've had a number of clients who have experienced sexual harassment and sexual assault in their workplace. So we want to appreciate the work the council has done in this issue and support the legislation along with Ernie here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If the group from Mediterranean Inn is here? You need a minute? Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Can we go with George Kron? Hi, George, thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. As been the theme here, my name, I'm sorry, George Kronk. I'm the general manager at the Hotel 1000. A lot of us have come up through the business, obviously. And, you know, we continue to talk about employee safety, which obviously is crucially important to every one of us. I stand in front of my group of employees on a daily basis, you know, talk through making sure that they're closing doors behind them, making sure they have everything they need to be successful in their daily job. But, you know, and obviously, we want to provide healthcare. The healthcare that's being proposed, a dollar amount, exceeds what is necessary to get qualified health insurance. Of course, we want to make sure they have qualified health insurance, something they can all afford. You know, we continue to talk about the overtime. The overtime, you know, for one portion over that square footage is just, it's, you know, to pay a full day's overtime is something that we just, you know, is just too much. We really need to, you know, look at, you know, how we're impacting. You know, we talk about small business, we talk about hotels. We really need to look and make sure that we're doing the right thing for all parties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. After the Mediterranean Inn, we will be hearing from Nicole Keenan and Tobias Girl, and then Jim and then Jim Gregerson.
Hi. So, we're the Mediterranean Inn and the Bell Town Inn. I thought if we were a group, we might have just a little longer.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead, and we will give you, since we took 30 seconds off the original time, we'll take a full minute off the group time, so you'll have four minutes total.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we're not just representing the Bell Town Inn. We're also the Mediterranean Inn, but also the Bell Town Inn, which Kim is our tenant at and will not be if this legislation passes as is. I started this industry in the '90s. I started as a night clerk, 24-hour, you know, overnight graveyard. I worked day shift. I worked evening shift. I cleaned hundreds of rooms. I've done hundreds of hours of maintenance. Every single member on my team started as an entry-level employee. It's one of the few meritocracies left, and you guys have it on a bullseye for some reason that's inexplicable to me. I'm deeply personally offended at the attitude you think we have towards our team, and I've invited each of you individually, except for Ms. Swant, to come by the property, either property, anytime they want, get a full tour, see how business works, talk to employees, and educate yourselves. We have never been invited to meaningfully participate in this legislation, and you're on an express train run with it. Both hotels are small, family-owned hotels that have already taken $200,000, $300,000 a year additional expenses with some of the legislation you guys have passed without consulting us in any meaningful way. What you're talking about now is another $500,000, $600,000 a year. $1,600 and change is not even remotely realistic, what it costs to provide decent quality insurance, but you don't seem interested in that. At any rate, the small family-owned businesses like ours, and by the way, we've, each, these families have owned these since they build them from the ground up. They don't sell them to REITs. Family-only businesses like ours will disappear, and you'll be left with what you want. No small businesses, no family-owned businesses in the city limits. We certainly won't have coffee shops and restaurants and things like that in any hotel if these pass. And those who pay their rent and their mortgage and take care of their families on these jobs won't have them. Every person in our team has an opportunity in our businesses. It's grossly unfair, happening much too quick, and happening without any meaningful input from the real stakeholders. And I still extend that invitation if any of you want to educate yourselves on what goes on in real life at these properties. We had panic buttons, by the way. I put them in in '99 or 2000. And we get a great LNI rate because we're so accident-free. We take care of our people. We don't have the contempt for them that you guys seem to think we have, and it's really sad.
Nicole Keenan. Nicole Keenan, followed by Tobias Girl, followed by Jim Gregerson, and then Amanda Parsons. And I'm going to remind folks, we do want to accommodate groups when you do have them. We do ask for folks to have more than one person speak if you're coming up as a group. Nicole, and then we'll go through.
Hi. Hi, my name's Nicole Valastero-Kedonly. I'm the executive director of Puget Sound Sage. One of the things I want to name is I come from four generations of women of color small business owners. And on top of that, I've spent the better part of the last 10 years either passing labor standards or supporting and enforcing them. One of the things that I noticed when I was doing a lot of labor standards enforcement was that one of the common traits and dissonances between employees and the people who pay their paychecks at times are an assumption about the relationship. A lot of times, I hear a lot of bosses say, "We're like family. We're family." And I hear workers say, "I'm so afraid of them that I don't know how to approach this because they think we're like family." And if you come from any kind of family, you know that families often have boundaries that are unclear. There's a lot of times when maybe families are abusive. So, I just don't think that that's a really great metaphor to talk about what it means to have an employer-employee relationship. I am the boss of 15 people. I would never call them family, but I respect their rights deeply. And why I do that by following labor law, by encouraging the passage of labor law and supporting workers in every way that I can. This law is vital for the protection of, in particular, workers who are subject to sexual harassment and sexual assault. It is so very rare there's a false accusation, so statistically rare that there is a false accusation. So, anytime a woman comes forward, we have to believe them. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Tobias, thank you for waiting. And then Jim Gregerson, Amanda Parsons, followed by Dustin Lambrou and Nathan Rottle.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me here today. I'm Tobias Girl. I'm the economic program coordinator for LGBTQ allyship, LGBTQ+ economic justice organization, representing over 3,700 community members here in the Puget Sound area. In 2016, we worked hard to pass Initiative 124 because hotel workers' rights are LGBTQ people's rights. We're more likely to work in the service industry, and we're more likely to experience the kind of harassment and discrimination that this law is intending to combat. Additionally, we work closely with the workers. We hear their complaints, and we hear their lack of education around their rights. These very same managers who are talking about their workers as their family often neglect to inform them that nice things like panic buttons only appear when laws are passed. They do not inform them that they are legally mandated. So, we cannot urge strongly enough that OLS enforcement be a part of this law. It has been more than proven necessary. We urge the members of the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee and the City Council as a whole to stand with hotel workers and support this legislation in its entirety, along with any necessary amendments brought forward by committee chair Mosqueta. We thank you all for your time, and that concludes my speech on behalf of the real stakeholders.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Jim. Followed by Jim is going to be Amanda, Dustin, and then Nathan.
My name is Jim Gregerson. I'm an insurance broker for Parker Smith &amp; Feek. We work closely with our clients, hotel clients. We sit down behind the closed doors, and we have the conversations about what we feel and what they feel is best for their employees. They're in a very competitive business. Finding talent, particularly in this market, is very difficult, and they spend a lot of time and energy trying to do what's best for their employees. I can say that from personal experience. I know exactly how they think because I've sat down, again, behind the closed doors, and I think there's a lot of concern about the focus of the employers. I'd also say that the way the pricing is structured is not reflective of how insurance pricing really works. Having a flat dollar amount is, in fact, probably the worst way to buy insurance. The appropriate way is to find the right level of coverage, affordable, you know, looking for affordability, looking for quality of coverage, and matching that with what employees needs. So, I would very much encourage you to sit down with some folks in the insurance business, figure out how insurance prices are created, and then, of course, determine if there's fairness in all this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hi, Amanda.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Amanda Parsons. I'm the general manager of the Thompson Seattle. I've worked in the hospitality industry for over 20 years, and I started my career, as many people have today, as a server in a family-owned restaurant. And I've committed my career to this industry in a variety of roles. In my experience, this legislation will bring additional unintended consequences. This is being rushed. This industry is unique because of its interdependence. There is no one department or discipline that can survive without the others. Everything we do, day in, day out, is as a team. There is no doubt that we care about our employees. We work together every single day. We have relationships with each other. We celebrate our successes and life's milestones. I sleep with my phone next to the bed and answer it at all hours. I'm available to my team for any reason. Our focus on safety to all team members is because we care, not because we have to. This is why we've already established anti-harassment policies in our hotels, support safety committee meetings and training, and conduct annual hotel-wide safety training regularly. We also supported the passage of statewide panic button requirements and are proud to provide them to each of our team members. How much you spend on insurance does not determine the quality of the coverage. We should be talking about the type of coverage, not the cost. There are long-term impacts to this legislation that would impact all industries, and this has not been explored enough. This is rushed. This is essentially like telling the used car salesman how much you have to spend before they show you their cars. Please take the time to learn more and understand the impacts. We need that.
Thank you, Amanda. Hi, Dustin. Following you will be Nathan Rottle, followed by Jeremiah Saldate and Mac McGarth.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chair Terry and members of the committee. I'm here on behalf of Teamsters Local 117, and I was also just elected president of the Martin Luther King County Labor Council.
Congratulations.
Thank you. This legislation is not rushed. We've had three years, over three years, to think about this legislation. I was a voter in 2016. I got my voter's pamphlet statement, and the legislation, Initiative 124, said more than just panic buttons. This is not rushed. This has been thoughtful. I know the hotel industry chose not to fight this three years ago because they knew the polling was really bad. And so, now you're trying to, and then you sued for three years, and now you're trying to encourage council not to pass this legislation. This is important. That room downstairs is full of women and people of color who work in your hotels, and I just strongly encourage you all, managers from the hotels, to think about optics. And I understand it's the last meritocracy, but maybe have some women and people of color promoted to management. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Nathan? Okay, folks. Folks. All right. I'm going to say this, and I was going to save it for the end, but I appreciate how folks have been respectful to let people have their minute and a half. We're going to continue to go through. I am fine with the plazas, but we're going to keep this in a respectful manner. I know there's stuff that has been said that other people don't agree with. I appreciate the applause, but we're not going to engage in boos, okay? So, we are going to continue, and that is Nathan Rottle, followed by Jeremiah, and then Mac.
Okay. My name is Nathan Rodkey. I'm from Washington, Kan. I want to thank you guys for having me here today. This country is way behind on healthcare. I'm here to talk about healthcare. We're way behind as a country. It's really unconscionable. My organization stands on the belief that healthcare is a human right. And I actually want to thank those of you who showed up that are leading on that, that are providing like gold-level insurance for your employees. Like, that's really cool. That's a good thing. You guys should feel really good about that, and I appreciate that you guys have done that. However, we wouldn't be here today if restaurant employees and hotel employees were all had great health insurance. They clearly don't. That's why we're, that's one of the reasons that piece is in that legislation. So, I really want people to examine that as you engage, as you engage with one another to make sure that we are all collectively leading on this. And I want to applaud folks in City Council, who, and the workers and the employees, and I stand in solidarity with them because I hear the word dignity being thrown around here, and I appreciate everybody who's saying that in earnest to respect the dignity of workers, especially when it comes to health. Nobody should be making any sorts of decisions for medical care with the fear of the bill in mind. So, again, if you guys are serious about leading on healthcare, make sure that you present something where you're able, where all of you are able to provide gold-level coverage for your employees. Thanks, everybody.
Nathan. All right. Thank you. One more reminder. We have Jeremiah, followed by Mac McGarth, followed by Katie Gero. And as folks are potentially making their way up from downstairs, I want to encourage everybody to direct your comments to us, the City Council members. That's something we've done in the past, and I just want to make sure everybody knows we're here to receive those comments. Councilmember Swant, and just let me do one more reminder to folks who are coming up. We're looking for Jeremiah Saldate, Mac McGarth, McGarth, Katie Gero, followed by Christie Smith.
I believe Jeremiah and Mac have already spoken.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for telling me if that's the case. We will move on to Katie Gero, followed by Christie Smith, Leah Laver, and Michael Bion. I'm going to say those again. If Jeremiah and Mac are here, you're up. Katie Gero, Christie Smith, Leah Laver, and Michael Bion. Hi, Michael. I recognize you. Why don't you come on up, and then as folks make their way in, we'll get them to the microphone.
Thank you so much. I'm Michael Bion. I'm the executive director of an organization called Asian Counseling and Referral Service. We're a civil rights and social justice organization that reaches over 35,000 folks each year. I'm here tonight to ask council to provide safety from harassment and harm for our hotel workers and to ensure that they have access to medical care that you and I enjoy. A majority of non-management hotel workers, like housekeepers, are immigrants, about 56%. They have an average age of 40 and are the main support to their family. 80% are women. The 2012 IMF chief Dominique Strauss-Kahn's case of alleged attack on an immigrant housekeeper is one clear example and a reminder of why the legislation, as it currently proposed, sends a strong message to hotels should trust workers, and when a hotel guest has perpetrated violence, take action to ban that person. In the area of healthcare access, hotel workers face a daunting choice of paying the exorbitant premium for employee-based plans and out-of-reach deductibles versus food for their family and housing. In many instances, hotel workers are needing to cover 40% of their medical costs they can't afford. So, they opt not to enroll, or they make a difficult choice of who in their family should go with or without coverage. These aren't the decisions that we want hard-working people to make. We urge this member of committee here to vote in support of this, in this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Hi, good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Katie Gero. I'm the deputy executive director of MLK Labor. This weekend, while talking to my mom about her general hopelessness under President Trump, she asked me what kept me from feeling totally defeated. I told her that I focused my intentions and efforts wholly on local efforts. On the same night that the United States of America elected a rapist hotel mogul, Seattle voters passed Initiative 124, a policy that protects mostly immigrant women of color from sexual harassment on the job. These efforts locally tell the story of the best of who we are. Due to the hotel association's deep pockets, they have successfully blocked the will of the voters using the court system. But workers have never depended on any court to decide our fate, and we aren't about to now. I want to say thank you to the Seattle City Council. As, excuse me, I want to say thank you to the Seattle City Council for finding a window when the door was closed. I've heard a lot of concerns about the ways that this initiative believes women who report sexual harassment. Due process for the accused, they say. But does a person with no shoes on get a right to due process when a restaurant removes them for being barefoot? No. Private establishments kick people out all the time, and this legislation gives the accused guests the right to notice and investigation and an appeal. For white liberals in particular, who are horrified by Donald Trump's racist behavior towards immigrants and people of color, supporting this legislation is one of the best ways that we can show allyship. Thank you.
Hi, welcome. And if folks do want to leave written comments, we will definitely take those.
Hi, I'm Leah Laver. I have been in hospitality for 23 years. My first job was at a very small hotel where I had many jobs as a front desk agent, housekeeping when housekeeping went home, engineering when they went home. I've also worked for several years in housekeeping and laundry, and then ultimately moved into HR. For me and the teams that I've been lucky to work with, the people that we work with and support has been what's kept me in hospitality for these 23 years. Today and always, fully supported panic buttons, never supported the harassment and mistreatment of anyone, whether that be employees, vendors, coworkers, or otherwise. We have practices in place to deal with that. I do think there's pieces of this legislation, this part of the legislation that we need to look at and how we implement it. I want to talk about the medical legislation and illustrate what I foresee in my experience in HR as an unintended consequence of the law. The intent of the law is to provide quality health coverage at an affordable price. Putting a set dollar amount on the coverage, in my opinion, takes- takes away our ability on the HR employer side to negotiate a plan that works for our teams. We know our teams. We know what ails them. We know whose child has autism. We know who's fighting cancer. And we are able to work with a broker who doesn't know how much we have to spend on the plan to negotiate a plan that works for what our teams need. Taking that away and prescribing an amount is essentially telling them what they can charge us for the bare minimum plan without being able to personalize it for our team.
Thank you. Leah, if you had more to say and we didn't get to it, feel free to leave your written comments with us as well. Christie Smith, I just want to make one last call to see if Christie's here, from Crown Plaza. Okay, moving on. Lori Rosello Torres. Hi, welcome.
Thanks for having me, council members. My name is Lori Rosello Torres. I'm a member of Migrante Seattle, an organization that serves migrant Filipino workers and their families. I'm also the language access organizer for API Chaya. As an organization that serves survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, API Chaya wholeheartedly supports the reinstatement of Initiative 124. We believe this law is necessary in preventing workplace violence against workers as well as ensuring workers can be healthy, able to keep their jobs, and continue to be able to provide for their families. We decried the lobbying of the American Hotel and Lodging Association to strike down this law in an attempt to avoid taking responsibility for the welfare of their employees and to deprive workers of their basic rights to safety and dignity. I'd like to remind them, and you, that without workers, some who are separated a long way from their families, tending to guests every day, day in, day out, ensuring that the establishment is clean, there would be no profits for the owners. They are the reason that the hospitality business and all businesses in our world-class city thrives. The impact of the physical labor they perform and the customer service emotional labor every day results in the need for healthcare to ensure that their bodies can continue to keep their jobs and provide for their families, and, by the way, keep the hotels running. This is about creating the conditions for workers to be able to do their jobs and keep their livelihoods. All workers deserve healthcare and safety, especially migrant workers. And we hope you stand by the just decision to reinstate this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next, the next four people that we have are Victoria Brooks, Stan Schuma, Katie Henderson, and Angelita Sherburne. If there is, I'm getting to the last list here. So if there's other folks who got inspired to testify, we're going to keep the sign-in sheet up there. But again, Victoria Brooks, are you here? Hey, thank you, Victoria. Followed by Victoria Stan. And apologies, Stan, for your last name that I'm sure I pronounced incorrectly. Hi, Victoria.
Thank you. I have the fortune to work at Lulay, which is an independent restaurant attached to the Sheraton. I think what I'm seeing here is that there are two separate issues that are being piled together. Hotel workers absolutely deserve to be safe. I don't think that should be a question. What is happening, though, is that a business that is merely by virtue of proximity is being in detriment, actually. So we're having to put that kind of imposition on the business. What will happen is that the business will fail. And so if you have that happening, you're going to have unemployed people. And all of these people that we're talking about are all human. The hotel workers are human, and the independent businesses and their employees are human too. And we all deserve to be safe and working. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stan, followed by Katie Henderson, followed by Angelita Sherburne, followed by Michael Hirsch. Hi.
Hi. Thank you, city council, for having us here. My name is Stan Shakuma. I am a member of the Seattle chapter of the Japanese-American Citizens League, and also a member of the Asian Pacific American Labor Alliance. I come here to support reinstatement of I-124. I believe, I grew up on a farm. And what this really brings back to me is some of the, in the '60s, my parents owned a small farm. And the United Farm Workers were trying to organize the valley. And the farmers, the growers, were very afraid of what was going to happen and fought against it quite a bit. The farmworkers' union wanted higher wages. They wanted better conditions. They wanted more safety. And the growers were afraid and not ready to deal with that. Eventually, union contracts were signed, and the sky did not fall. The farmers did not lose their businesses, and the workers got better conditions. Even the ones that were non-unionized got better conditions. I think we need to look at the people on the bottom and what they need and what they deserve. And I support reinstatement of I-124. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Katie Henderson, and I work at MLK Labor. And I'd like to share with you my experience working as a housekeeper. A housekeeper, a person, not a dollar sign. The amount of effort required to barely pass muster working there was nowhere near commensurate with the pay. Yet some other women I worked with justified the heartbreakingly low pay because they had benefits. I didn't have the heart to tell them that the hotel/high-end gym's locker room attendant made more than they did. I have worked in five different warehouses. I have operated ski lifts in the harshest of conditions. Cleaning hotel rooms was the hardest job I have ever had. I was so overworked and exhausted that my sleep schedule, my schedule was, work, shower, sleep, repeat. My feet were so swollen that it hurt to walk. I cleaned hotel rooms in my socks and made sure my manager did not notice. Where I worked, room assignments were by floor. We were understaffed. And the few coworkers I did have were spread out across the hotel. When I think about it now, I ask myself, should someone have assaulted me? Who would have heard me cry for help? Many housekeeping employees are immigrants who struggle with English. The independent nature of housekeeping helps them obtain employment. One coworker from Hong Kong asked me in broken English, "This is hard work. Why do you work here for such little pay?" The only reason I work here is because I can't speak English. I lived in the U.S. for two years before I found a job. And one final issue that I need to address, despite my time being up, is that there's a problem with suicides, actually. A lot of people commit suicide in hotel rooms. And that's something that I was very grateful that I did not have to encounter. But it does happen. And for that reason, panic buttons are very important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you had written testimony. We're happy to take that as well and share it with the rest of the council if you'd like to leave that. Angelita Sherburne, followed by Michael Hurst, followed by... I will read this in a moment as we are getting that other testimony, and maybe my colleagues can help me. D appears to be the first initial. Okay, do we have Angelita?
Hi, my name is Angelita Sherburne. I'm, I am a union leader from SEIU 1199 Northwest and 25 years in housekeeping job. And I'm an EBS worker at Swedish Providence Cherry Hill Campus. I am here to stand in solidarity with the hotel workers of Shuttle because I know what it is like to get injured on the job. When you have to use your body repeatedly, lift heavily linen, pushing heavy carts, and most importantly, have too much workload, your body is always at risk of injury. Recently, I had to clean 21 rooms, plus four discharges, and 10 common areas, plus hallways to mop, all in eight hours. I was really exhausted, but I really wanted to finish my job before the end of the day. At the end of my shift, I had my last discharge to clean. I pulled out the heavy linen from the hamper, which is a normal duty of my job. But this time, I twisted my wrists and my ligament swollen. My family was worried for me because I am the breadwinner of the family. If I cannot work, the worry is that I may not be able to support my family in the Philippines.
Angelita, could you wrap up for us, just because of the time?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Feel free to leave your public testimony as well. And if you have one more sentence, we're happy to tell you that. You can take one sentence to wrap up.
Oh, I just have a small words here. I urge the member of the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee and the city council as a whole to stand with hotel workers and support the legislation unit entirely so that no family should have to suffer uncertainty about where the next paycheck is coming when we get hurt at work.
Okay, thank you very much. Michael? Michael, Michael Hirsch? And then Deresley? D. Restley? Sorry. Is there anybody else who has signed up? I saw one more person sign up on that sheet there. And maybe somebody's making their way to the microphone because they think I said their name. If, are there anybody who just said, anybody who has signed up? And then we will have Sonia Guevara and Ilona Kiner. Sonia Guevara? She'll testify. Ilana Kiner? Hi. Thanks for waiting.
No, I just walked up to sign up anyway. So my name's Ilona Kiner. While I don't have any experience in the hotel industry, I do have some experience in food. But what I want to say is that people, there are good work, good actors in the hotel community, but that doesn't cover everyone. It's a false equivalency to say that if I do something good, everyone's going to do something good. The only way that we can get actual concrete guaranteed benefits is through laws, which is why this is important. While there may be some things wrong with, like saying a set dollar amount, we should have a set coverage that employers need to give their employees. So thank you so much for putting this on the table and for giving people the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. So I apologize if I've mispronounced your name. If you have signed up and you're waiting to testify, now's the time to line up at the microphone. We have gotten to the end of our 10 pages of public testimony. Hi, did you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Just introduce yourself for the record, and then we'll get you all signed up.
Good evening. Abby Lawler with Unite Here Local 8. I just wanted to take a second to note, it was a profound experience to be in this room tonight and to hear so many hotel workers, so many hotel managers and owners and folks from the industry declaring their unequivocal support for panic buttons. And I just want to recognize all of the organizing work and all of the women who've spoken out about their experiences over the last three years and have come forward and how that's pushed the industry and gotten us to where we are today. And so really want to recognize that and recognize their bravery and what they've done over the last three years to get us to where we are today. And also say that we can do better and we need to do better. And I think the legislation that's before you is going to be an important pathway for us to do that and make sure that women can go to work and feel safe and be protected. And I did want to offer just a few suggestions on the policy that's before the committee to ensure that the overall objectives of the policy are achieved in full. Hotel workers must have access to low-barrier, low-fear pathways to reporting workplace violence and harassment. And worker reports must trigger a reliable and meaningful action from their employers. And we urge the committee to consider amending the language to address the confidentiality of reporting workers and witnesses, to further protect workers from retaliation, and to grant workers a mechanism to appeal the results of an employer investigation in the same way that guests are allowed to appeal under the policy. Also want to note that the record-keeping requirements and notice requirements in the legislation should be strengthened to make sure that workers can defend their rights. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Abby. Last call for public testimony for today. There will be, as we talked about, three additional opportunities. And I'll read through those again before we conclude. Before anybody else gets up, anybody wanting to make their way to the microphone? Okay. At this point, before I had to say some closing words, I didn't open the floor to our council colleagues. If there's any last comments that folks would like to make, feel free to. Councilmember Swant?
Thank you. I really appreciate all the workers and the members of the labor movement who testified today, especially the rank-and-file members of Unite Here Local 8 and the non-union members who testified, because it is not easy. It is nerve-wracking to be able to speak openly and bravely about workplace conditions. I also want to reiterate from my office the commitment that we will absolutely be fighting for the best healthcare coverage for all workers, union and non-union. And I think there was really powerful testimony about how when, when union workers win something, it also positively affects non-union workers. So we're talking about workers in the entire city that will be impacted. The last thing I'll add is, just to echo what Abby said, it's interesting to see the hotel industry and the restaurant industry saying that they're committed to panic buttons and that they're happy to do it. First of all, it wouldn't have happened if workers hadn't fought for it. But also, I'm hearing from a lot of workers that it is not being implemented across the board. So if you are truly committed to it, I would urge you that it's actually implemented because we are hearing from workers that panic, they don't have panic buttons, and that they're hearing from the managerial, you know, the bosses that it's going to cost them too much to do it. And that's why they haven't implemented it. They need Wi-Fi and so on and so forth. There are studies that have been published that say that it is actually very, very reasonably priced and certainly big establishments like hotels can certainly do that. So we hope, given how much commitment you have expressed for panic buttons, that you will go ahead and implement that for all workers.
Thank you, council member. Birds, I want to thank everybody for being here. It's a full two-hour hearing, and we have gotten you out before the garage closes, so that feels good. I just want to say I appreciate the respectful conversation that's happened today. I know that folks have various opinions. Want to reiterate how important it is for people to feel heard when they come to the microphone, especially for those who might not come here and testify on a regular basis. We know that this is not easy to do. So want to make sure people feel like they're in a safe space when they do speak up. Thank you for adhering to our rules, as we talked about committing to a minute and a half. That's just not enough time. We know that. So we'll keep engaging with all of you who've come today. I want to thank councilmembers Bagshaw, Gonzalez, Pacheco, Herbold, and Swant. Thank you all for being here tonight and for actually being at multiple of these meetings. Councilmember Gonzalez's office and I have been working on some of the details that you've seen laid out so far. And we're all committing, as a council, to continue working on this legislation with the Office of Labor Standards, with the mayor's office, with central staff, and the city's attorney's office. There have been more meetings over the last six months trying to put together some of the initial proposals that you see. And we'll continue to have those discussions, especially based on the conversations that we've heard today, the priorities from stakeholders, ideas that we've heard from the various committee meetings, and today's robust discussion from all of you that has helped inform, again, the four pieces of legislation that we're talking about: harassment and safety of hotel workers, protection from injury and workload protections, healthcare for workers, and worker retention. These are four important components that together, I think, over the next few weeks here, we will have some additional opportunities to have various discussions. And today, again, is not the very beginning of the conversation, given the ongoing discussion around Initiative 124, the last few months of engagement that we've had with both industry and workers. But this is also a good place for us to reiterate that going forward, there's ample opportunities for us to continue to engage. Want to reiterate the dates that we talked about at the very beginning of the meeting. On July 11th, we will have conversation around possible changes, as we call issue identification, so we can bring forward some of the themes that we heard. Just summarizing, overtime calculation, healthcare calculation, small business slash ancillary business definition, issues around making sure that there's enforcement and low-barrier reporting for workers are just some of the themes that we heard about today. On July 18th, we'll be seeing some possible amendments and considering possible amendments for the council's consideration. We are planning to add a August 1st committee meeting. That's a Thursday, August 18th. Um, we are planning to add a August 1st, uh, committee meeting, that's a Thursday, August 1st, at 9:30, to talk more about those amendments and possible vote. And then, the second Monday of, uh, August is, uh, the date that we would like to bring this forward to full council. So, want folks to know what the timeline is. You all have that in your binders as well, um, and that has been made available, and we will include the written testimony that folks have given us, and if you want to send it, I think you know how to reach all of us. Uh, lastly, I want to say thank you to the incredible staff that have made tonight possible. Thank you so much to our team, Erin House, who's up here, Sajjo Parikh, Chief of Staff, Aretha Basu, um, who's been running around. Um, I know councilmember Gonzalez, I saw your staff, Brianna Thomas, um, and others. If I've missed anybody else, Roxana, thank you, to Roxana for being here as well, um, to our childcare providers who were on-site and providing childcare. We really appreciate you being here. And to our interpreters for making sure that everybody could understand what was being discussed in real time. Gracias a lo que están interpretando?
Traducción.
Por la traducción, por este noche. Thank you for the translation for this evening. Y gracias por su trabajo. Thank you for your work. Their work makes it possible for us to do our work. Su apoyo, su trabajo, es muy importante y no está trabajo. So, thank you to those interpreters. Um, and again, thank you all for engaging with us. We look forward to continuing to have that dialogue. And one last thank you to our security. You guys, thank you for staying extra and helping folks come up in the evening, um, and get up those stairs, uh, with the overflow room. We've really appreciated it. Just for the good of order, the next Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers Rights Committee will be on Thursday, July 11th, at 9:30 in these council chambers. Is there anything else? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.